We're close enough. I'd like to call this monthly meeting of the Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District Order. We'll establish a forum. We have Director Palmer, Director Schott, myself, Director Robinson, Director Blake, and Director Lewis in attendance. If you will all please rise and join me in placing allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the invisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all please be seated. Oh, that's okay. Director Minley, let them, oh, I'm gonna get that going. Let the record reflect, Director Minley is here. And now we have six out of seven. Uh, public comments. Bonnie, do we have anybody that signed up for public comment? No public comment. Okay. Discussion, possible action, approval of minutes from the October 28, 2025 public hearing and regular board meeting.
We can accept the minutes as published.
I will second that motion.
Chairman, I want to make sure y'all do the version I sent out this, the name Janelle. So I'll see my email. They forgot the one that I sent out, so I think, okay. I made some minor changes to the ones you were sending out the past.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll read over them. It, the motion is to approve both of them, David?
Yes.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes from the October 28 public hearing and regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. General manager's report.
We, since the last board meeting, we had, uh, no, not had any new applications come in, for example, since last board meeting. We've been busy. We've had several PPI, Public Information Requests come in. We've been working on, steadily working on those. Marty continues to go out and inspect the large wells on a monthly basis. Includes recording of the meter readings, photos of the members, and continues to work on our database for GMA. The statements and all the permittees will go out shortly after first of December. Our independent auditors, they're coming along good on our audit. We should have that probably for an agenda item next, you know, for the December board meeting. That will be closed for the Thanksgiving holidays, Thanksgiving Day and Friday after. Two of our holidays, according to our personnel manual. And it's, um, last year, my seven meeting in Sonora, was a presentation from Dr. Bell regarding Phase II of the DFC historical comparison, tracking the last five years, the last five-year planning period, achievements of the DFC. Action was taken to improve Phase II for the historical comparison with the preceding five years. And action to approve the alternative GMA update. And then there's general discussion about future GMA simulations. Next meeting will be in February. And the GMA 10 meeting in San Antonio, with, this is something, board has in their package, to discuss their, uh, next meeting will be coming up. Let's see, December the 10th. And one of the items will be the update to the interlocal agreements between the, there's five districts within GMA 10. And every few years, there's an interlocal agreement to fund various tasks with the Call Your Consulting. And that's something, the sense in the packet for the board members' consideration. There's also, there'll also be discussion and possible action on the new Southern Trinity GMA model. Reminders will be going out or have gone out to everybody about pumping volumes and distribution to the member districts. And that's all I have. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Uh, discussion, possible action, additional services for district iPads? What have you, what have you discovered on this one?
Okay, it will cost to, to up it. Right now, we're on five, to up it to.
Let me, background for anybody that doesn't know what's going on, we've, we've reached some data limits with the iPads.
Yes.
And when they reach their data limit, the emails certainly, they don't let you get any more emails on them. Uh, and the email becomes non-active. You can't send or receive emails from it. We ran into this problem last month, and we ran into it again this month. Uh, because a couple of us have bumped the limit on it, and that's why this is up, to discuss possible more limit to the iPad, so we don't have that problem anymore.
To get them, it'll be less than, it'll be less than $20 a month for all seven, eight iPads, to get them, eight iPads, I guess, to get them updated to the 50.
And that's, that's, so we're talking about going from five gigabytes, just so everybody got the numbers, to 50, a factor of 10, and about 20 bucks for all eight iPads to do that?
I make a motion that we approve. $20?
Twenty, twenty-five, be, be less than 30 anyway, for each of them.
I wouldn't hang, I wouldn't hang the number. I would, if you want to, if you want to limit it, limit it under 50. Okay.
Wes, Wes, can I say something real quick?
Absolutely.
We'll just have to, we may send an email later to bring them in, because it's with Chad Potts. And the guy that comes in usually asks for them to come in, for us to have iPads on hand, so we may send an email to all the directors. Just, if you happen to just bring in whatever schedule works out for y'all, for us, just to have them so they can.
Text message, because my email's not working.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll send a text message. Catch you, but yeah.
Just for the boards general knowledge and the publics, there's a lot of services that you can put on these iPads. You can put, you can connect phones, independent phone lines to them and all kinds of stuff. The only thing that we're talking about is increasing the amount of data with the service. So to email account doesn't get shut down when we hit five gig. And that's all we're talking about, increasing on those. Director Ward, you have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
Janelle, get us some more data. Gigabytes, whatever you want to call it.
Motion's been made and seconded. We'll, the discussion is from five to 50 gigabyte on the increase. Is there any discussion on the matter? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. And I second it, you.
Randy did.
No, that's right, Randy did. I was thinking I didn't get one on that. Oh, let's see. I'm trying to keep up with too much. Second shot.
They kind of keep.
6-0. All right. Presentation hydrological update from Freezing Nichols. Mr. Claus, if you would please.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone should have a packet, Freezing Nichols header on the top of it. I had to walk everyone through this here tonight. We'll spend a lot of time on the first two pages here, which is just an update in terms of where we are on project work. The next two are memorandums, memorandums that I'm providing to the district, so that we can tie up a few loose ends and provide some additional clarity to some, some previous public comments and discussions here with the board. Little housekeeping that I would like to start off with. Um, we approved two separate task authorizations. The first one was for on-call hydro geo services, which is really the, the catch-all for being able to respond to emails, attend district meetings. That was approved for $25,000. That was the first task authorization that was approved under our master service agreement. We're at the end of that 25,000 now, um, with me attending this meeting tonight. My recommendation is that we re-up that at the next meeting. A lot of heavy lifting went into that as it related to getting up to speed quickly. That was what we used to provide time for me to have meetings with district board members, do a lot of very quick lit review as it related to the DNC, um, and the MAG concerns that were initially addressed, um, by the board and the public. I'm assuming from this point forward that money will go a lot farther. It's really just going to be used for meetings. So that's some housekeeping. I will bring that to the next board meeting. So that would be an amendment to that task authorization one. So there's no action item on that tonight, but it is something that I would like to bring next month for, for board, uh, consideration. Now, with that said, I plan to get into this first page here now, the memorandum. This is kind of the, the project update for Task One, Task Two, Task Three, that were part of that second task authorization. What I've done is, I've kept the format similar to what I provided last month, but changes that I have made, I put in bold and italics there, so it's easy to see kind of what we are changing as we continue to move forward. One of those first changes you'll notice under Task One, is the word late is in bold and italics, um, that previously said early. We have not started this yet in, in, in terms of significant effort. That's because we have been hyper-focused on Task Two. That is something I do plan to start next week. Um, but with all of that said, we're going to develop a conflict in the December meeting for discussion as it relates to the DFC and the potential MAG revision there from TWDB. So my recommendation, really thinking about the timeline and the limited time that we have here, is that we push the delivery date for Task One into January, just to avoid, um, a two-hour lengthy discussion on the DFC and then rule recommendations all in the same meeting. Um, I think staying focused on the DFC is a priority based on what I have heard. So my recommendation would be to move that into January there. Then as we bump down into Task Two here, I did attend the GMA.
What question?
Yes, sir.
You're saying, uh, which one are we moving into January? Move both of them into January, or?
Well, yes and no. So Task One, move into January completely. We did have a December 31st delivery date on that. With that said, we also proposed providing a presentation to the board at the December meeting, uh, potentially. That's taking away from work that we're trying to do on the DFC and MAG front. So the recommendation is to push.
Move that, and we work on the DFC and the MAG December.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
And so bumping down into Task Two, I did also attend the GMA seven meeting there in Sonora. The, the next thing to, to take a look at there is under that category that says in progress and next steps. I have a meeting with the Texas Water Development Board on November 24th to discuss very specifically what their requirements are going to be from the district in terms of what they want to see to help justify a MAG revision. Um, this is folks from their groundwater modeling, um, department there. So I'm hopeful that based on the information we received in that meeting, we'll be able to be very prescriptive in what we're providing them, moving us all towards that, that same common goal here that we've discussed previously. Couple changes here. We have a little bit of leniency now as it relates to timelines. That's because the next GMA meeting, we assumed was going to be in January. That's been pushed into February, which is a good thing here, because what that would allow us to do here is to workshop findings in the December meeting. And so there's no vote, there's no action in the December meeting. We just workshop those findings and what, that could be in a workshop setting prior to the board meeting or during. It's open to what direction y'all would like to head there. Um, but then deliver the formal report, finalize the formal report and deliver that to the board in January based on comments received during that workshop session. So that would be, we would then be finalizing, or the board would adopt its preferred approach to pumping related to GMA seven, um, in the January meeting. So we have more time there. I still think we should workshop in December, but we have no pressure on us to have all the answers in December. That's been given a little bit more time there, which allows us to get into January to have that discussion. Ultimately, Janelle needs direction from the board. Um, and so the report that we provide, we want to make sure aligns with whatever direction that's going to be, and that's what that workshop session should allow us for in December.
Wouldn't be a good date for that, for you.
Right now, before the board meeting, if, if we could do a five o'clock workshop prior to the, uh, board meeting, um, or it could be during the board meeting, it's just, I'm assuming that could be an hour worth of conversation and back and forth there. So.
Okay.
But just in terms of being considerate of time, and I think doing it the same day as that board meeting makes a lot of sense. And it could be earlier in the day as well, but I, I know time is limited for some folks here.
I, I'm flexible. I tend, I tend to like to do those separate from the, from the business meeting, but if you don't think that it's that time consuming and what we're going to be going up, and then there's no need to, to separate it in a different day. Uh, the time is up to the board as far as they go.
I'm assuming we need to have about an hour. That's why a workshop may be at five. Or if it's during the board meeting, that works too. It'd just be a longer board meeting that day.
Pleasure of the board.
So, turning the page. This is Task Three, where we've been working with Jim to finalize our review and finalize the groundwater pumping source offer for data sets. Um, we've developed a draft pumping data set now, where we have pumping not only countywide or based on a GMA. We've also subdivided that based on aquifers now. So we're calling it draft. It's preliminary, but now we can look at how much pumping is coming out of the Austin Chalk. How much pumping is coming out of the Edwards and associated limestone. And the reason that's important is for GMA, uh, seven specifically, we want to make sure we're providing accurate pumping numbers for the Edwards Trinity, not also including those Austin Chalk numbers in there, um, which would then inflate those numbers about 10% is kind of what we're looking at right now. So.
Is it usually good with the Texas Water Development Board? Are they usually pretty understanding and listening?
They, they want to work with us.
Okay.
They want to be helpful. They want to provide as much assistance as they're able to. So I'm expecting that meeting to, to go well.
To go well.
I'm hopeful we'll have a very formulaic recommendation for, for what they're going to require from us at the end of that meeting. Any other questions on first one here? All right. On the, the second memorandum that I provided, it was just a little bit of clarification on the V6 water level trends and their relations to Lost Morris Springs. That was part of, um, if you recall, Jim gave a presentation, there was some public comment, and there was a little bit of uncertainty as it specifically related to the V6s. So this is just to provide some clarity in terms of what, while we're talking about what pumping is associated with that well, um, and what that well really signifies. So. Any questions there? Should be some easy live readings before bedtime there for any of y'all there.
That's basically, I gotta read it before I come up with a question. I gotta try to, I gotta study it a little bit.
Provide some clarity to that discussion. It is the purpose and intent here. And then if we can move on to the, the last one here, this is just a little bit of follow-up on the Austin Chalk and its potential effects on other aquifers. I provided a section in here, um, that clarifies what the question was that was asked me that day, which was, is there any published science that says the Austin Chalk has no effect on other aquifers? I then provide some additional clarity in terms of some additional comments that are consistent with those remarks I made during that, that meeting. But then also a little bit of clarification. The one thing I failed, um, to, to recognize in my response, uh, Director Palmer was, he said any aquifers. I was very hyper-focused on the Edwards. Um, and I wanted to call some attention to the fact that the Austin Chalk can and most likely does communicate with the Del Rio and then the Buta due, due to fractures and localized pathways in those systems. So still feel strongly that the Edwards and Austin Chalk are separated because of the Del Rio or gracing. But because the question was any other aquifers, I wanted to make sure I was providing some clarity there in terms of my answer to that specific point. And then I provide some relevant literature from Bennett and Sayer, and then, and then, uh, Ron Green, who I, who I believe y'all have, uh, met a few times before here. So. Any questions related to that one there? And I guess, in summary, we're going to be hyper-focused on Task Two, which is the DFC and MAG conversation. I expect that the December meeting will be, um, hopefully eventful as we get into some discussion there. I will try to prepare materials in advance of that meeting and provide those to Janelle to, to email to the board members. Uh, we're probably looking only about two, maybe three days prior to the meeting, just with that meeting being bumped up a little bit earlier in the month. We're a little short on time, but we're going to make sure that we're providing enough to where we can have, um, a very thoughtful conversation that day.
Good. Any questions?
I have a question. I'm going to go for you. Uh, do you want me to work this or that before he reaches the board, or do you want to see their recommendations before I assess?
To be completely honest, I think it would be more efficient for you to, uh, work together.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
Uh, as opposed to him presenting it to us and then you having to review it and us come back another month later and it doesn't get anything done. I think, I think it would be much better for you to work together.
We'll, we'll work on that January.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Vince. Uh, review the Texas Water Development Board drought index and aqua monitoring data. Y'all can look at it. I don't want to. I know what it's about.
I'll begin with this change of rain we have coming up that, maybe these colors will change on here for us a little bit in the next few days. We could, we could stay in some of that five, six inches of rain that they're talking about.
I'm always wary about asking. Sometimes you get a lot more than what you wanted. Anyone have any questions for Vince or Jim?
Well, I have one. Mr. Palmer, were you able to find that on the?
Yeah, I did.
I would like to know how it correlates with these charts.
Yeah, I think what you asked me very was, uh, would I be able to figure out what stage the Edwards Aquifer was in in San Antonio and Uvalde? So, so yeah, and Vince and I were talking before the meeting, and Vince, you can tell Director Minley what we were talking about, but the San Antonio pools are stage four. There are currently 40% reduction there, and then the Valley Pool is stage five, 44% reduction in the Edwards Aquifer. We hear, you know, the maps or whatever, wherever that map went, back there somewhere. Anyway, we all know the Edwards Aquifer is in this county and Dr. Hutchinson has been, uh, probably in exactly quoted as it's all the Edwards, which is not, you know, an oversimplification, but anyway, Vince, do you want to clarify how the fact that they're in such dire straits that we might not be as in dire straits, although we're still in a bad situation necessarily, but anyway, you want to elaborate?
Well, I'll, um, start off by saying it's all the Edwards. It, it's all connected, but how connected? I mean, that's what we've been talking about now for a couple of months here in terms of whether it's the Austin Chalk to the Edwards, or Pinto Valley, um, to Lost Moras, um, what level of connection? That, that's what we're trying to figure out, right? We still have a lot of work to do. Um, I think as it relates to these different pools, um, Kenny County has its own pool. And that is defined on how water flows from, throughout the Edwards in this county. When you're east of bracket, that water's flowing towards Uvalde. We've got to divide, a structural divide that allows water to flow from high points to low points. And we've got a high point just east of town here in the Edwards. So you've got water that's flowing east towards Uvalde. We have water levels that we are able to correlate, we're able to use those water levels to show us flow directions. And then we also have water that flows west, and that's the Kenny Pool here. Um, your, your specific question about how dire, I mean, the whole state's been in prolonged and persistent drought for a decade now. I mean, it's bad everywhere. And so we do have drought. It is a statewide problem. It's not a Kenny County problem. Aquifers all across the state have seen dropping water levels. None of that's new. None of that's really any different than anywhere else in the state. It's just our current climate regime, what we're dealing with. Uh, we've had a lot of population growth. There's a lot of factors there. Um, I, I think the, the chart, the, the graphic that you showed there, those are specific, uh, benchmark or, uh.
Yeah, if I look at, it's just a standard, you know, front page of the Edwards Aquifer, the well levels and what stages they're at.
And so the difference between the Edwards Authority and Kenny County is tens of millions of dollars of research that have gone into defining those pools. Um, and those benchmarks that, that we use for references for, for different drought declarations. The other thing Kenny County has working against it, is half the water's flowing towards Uvalde, the other half is flowing towards Valverde. Just the limited amount of that water actually comes out of the ground here in Kenny County. You've got a lot of water that leaves this county. And so there's a lot of work for us to do. There's not an easy answer. Um, it's going to take time. It's going to take more investments. It's going to take more hard conversations. But that's.
Yeah, real quick, Vince, just while you're talking, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the latest model that was, you know, ran on the current MAG and all that, it's like 2011. And that's the most, best available science right now, basically.
And I, I think we've all.
It's pretty old, the model that's being currently used by Texas Water Development Boards.
It, it is. Now, they're not weather forecasting models. And once you create a model, you don't always have to update it. But I think the, the conclusion there, and I even heard this from, from Dr. Hutchinson at the GMA seven meeting, was that model was worse than the one that was created prior to it. So we have a bad model, which is why we're not using it.
Yeah, okay. Someday we'll have a new one.
Someday we'll have a new one.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to item 10. Discussion, possible action, proposed draft rule amendments.
I'd like to start off here. Um, my preferred method for rule adoption is to bring a draft proposed rule to the board. Have you discussed whether about this is the rule you want to propose? If you want to propose this rule, we will then publish it, schedule a public hearing, hold that public hearing, following the public hearing and hearing the comments, we determine whether we want to finally adopt that rule. So that way it's a rule that you blessed before it ever goes out to the public.
If I got a chance to take a swing at it.
Right. And so, uh, the, the purpose of this particular one has to do with implementing what we call the guitar kicks. And in that case, the guitar family sued that the. The guitar family sued that the. Husband district, because the husband district rules. Essentially limited the sale of groundwater. Or permits outside the district. To those who already had, to the historic users. And the statute does allow for districts to issue historic use permits and to protect historic use the maximum except by tipple. But the Supreme Court said you don't get to amend those historic uses and keep your historic protection. You have to go, there, I think the exact line, the opinion is you have to go get in line with everybody else. So there, in order to be able to sell a water right, you would have to request a regular permit. It doesn't say that you have to then change what your historic use permit is. I think there was a presumption on behalf of the court that everybody had. The whole state kind of followed a relative system where you get a certain amount of acre feet per acre. That's not the case, obviously. But, you know, thinking that if you wanted to have two acre foot or sell. Sell half of your permit to for use outside the district. You would then have to likewise reduce your historic use permit, but that's. Again, unless there's a limit on how much you could produce per acre, for example. You don't really have to amend your permit, your historic permit at all to do whatever you want to do. You could just get a permit on top of. Whatever historic permit that you have for a different use or a different place. Now, the exact question before the court is whether or not those permits could be changed to use. At both the purpose of use for irrigation to municipal and for use outside of the district. The Attorney General said that the use outside the district is incidental to the decision. That really what we're talking about here is the change in the. The purpose of use and the place of use. So. That really the only elements to the permit are the place of use, the purpose of use. The amount of the use. The rate of withdrawal and the point of withdrawal. So the point of withdrawal and the rate of withdrawal are not going to change. The only things that would change are the place of use and the purpose. Not the amount that would be used.
Pause, you just want to say, I just want the record to reflect that Director Bland has. Arrived at the meeting.
Thank you. So what this rule proposes to follow exactly what the Attorney General opinion said in twenty eighteen. Which is if you want to get a new permit for a new use, you have to get in line just like if you get a regular permit. If you want to amend your historic use permit by a large amount, then you can. That's not something the district has to require. Or can consider in issuing the new permit. If your permit has to be based on the same. Statutory provisions, rule provisions as any other regular permit. So that's what I believe I have drafted up. If that's not clear, when I draft that, we may need to change to it before we. Publish it. If it is clear, I think we're ready to go.
My, my only comment, and. I've read through that case extensively, many times. I'm not an attorney, but. My reading through that, the court seemed to be fairly clear that. Existing and historic use permits were granted for a specific purpose. And when you change that purpose. You no longer have that protection. And I feel really, I think we're really solid on that one.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think we're really solid that if it goes. Outside of the county. It needs a new permit because they ruled that way. But if we change the purpose, if we change the place of use, the rate of withdrawal, is that? I mean, was that covered in the ruling? Did I miss that?
Well, the place of use certainly was because that had, it was the place of use happened to be outside the county, but that was the primary. The two changes that are primarily making those permits were the purpose of use of the place.
You think, you think that the ruling covered, it's not specific to be in an out of county use, being a new use and requiring a new permit?
I do not think it's tied to exports on. And the Attorney General opinion agrees with me on it.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Like I said, the other seems. There's no argument that. What they said. They said, when you get existing historic use first, that's specific purpose. And when you change it, you don't get that protection. I mean. I think that one's pretty clear cut. I, even I understood that one.
Now, could some future court? Use that difference to come up with a completely different opinion? Yes, they could.
Yeah.
They could say, no, no, that, that, that opinion is entirely limited to exports outside the county. I doubt they'll do that, but it could happen. I mean, the other thing they should do is completely reverse themselves or future court say that court's completely wrong. That happens too. In which case, we'll change our rules again.
And substantially alter a historic or existing use permitted well or well system. I see that if it was going to be an increase in rate, if it was going to change the rate. But it seems somewhat vague in that we're not tying it down to exactly what it is. They can't. Would substantial. You see where I'm coming from?
Yes. I love coming with a bit of recognition, but I just don't know what it is.
Well, we've got in here. We've got in here a new will. It's not a replacement well. We've got the rate of withdrawal. We've got the place to use. We've got the purpose of use. So how do you address substantially? I guess my question with that is, I mean, at times you may need. To alter it. If you have to go back and rework the well, you're not necessarily going to put the exact same pump back in it because it might not even be available anymore. Man, I've been out of the hole for fifty or sixty years. So. Maybe that needs to be expanded a little bit. To say not substantially alter it in a manner where. You're going to withdraw more water. Or at a different rate. And it needs to be tied back to the other two. I'm not sure. I don't know how to address that. I can see where somebody might have to alter. Their permitted well or their well system simply because they want to change it from electric to. Propane. Or from propane to diesel. I just think it's something that we need to consider with that number of five at any rate.
Looking at.
You got me past, you got me past the other ones.
I think, I think number three maybe ought to be increase the rate of withdrawal.
Well, we've got that one on six. We've got increased annual groundwater production authorized above the historic or existing permitted use, which. Makes sense. I mean, if you've already gone through the process, you can't raise it.
Likewise, three should say increase because if they want to amend the permit, decrease rate of withdrawal. The rate of withdrawal is a maximum amount. If you want to increase the size of the pump you put in there so that you get a higher rate of withdrawal. Then you're going to have to bend that and that's not going to be covered by the historic use permit. That maybe three ought to say increase the rate of withdrawal. Number five, it's. Other, other districts have that phrase in there. I think that came out of the. The AG opinions. I just want that up real quick.
Well, I don't mind proposing them, but I'm going to have to study up on it a lot because it doesn't, the rate of withdrawal. And I just. It seems like there, there could be misuse of this rule against a permitee that's not trying to do anything that they've done anywhere different. It seems like it's going a little bit far.
Can I say something here?
Please.
I don't think it's going to make a whole lot of difference if you're set at a base rate of how much you're going to pump out. Like Mr. Schott with the eighty acre feet. Changing how you do it. Shouldn't be a big issue. If you're restricted to that amount.
Just playing, just playing devil's advocate. I mean, withdrawal rate is important because. It ultimately affects the recovery when you turn the pump off, right? So it is impactful and it's certainly a consideration. On the other hand. I don't think that a guy ought to lose his existing historic use protection because he went another fifty gallons per minute. To run his pivot. Because he didn't get that historic use to run that pivot anyway. He got to do flood irrigation. We want him to do the pivot because it's more efficient. So I think there's a reason.
Not going to change, will it?
Oh, I agree on an annual basis. I don't think it has, I think it has any, any, any serious impact, but on the short term. You know, if you go from. Three hundred gallons, thirty gallons a minute to three hundred gallons a minute, you may be more impactful to surrounding wells. So it's certainly a consideration.
You got a permit for five hundred acre feet. And you take that out over the course of the year, you're going to have X amount of impact on the aquifer. Vince, please tell me if I step on your toes here. If you change that so all of it's coming out in one month. You might have a much more dramatic impact on what's happening around.
I understand that.
So the rate, and that is the rate of withdrawal, I think makes a difference.
But I, I mean, I'm leaning your way, obviously. I think, I think there's a problem with.
But.
We're trying to take it away.
Right, but I mean. Who would? I hope, he must have a real big pivot. You're going to use that much at a time.
Uh, well, I mean.
You know what I'm saying?
The pivot, pivot requirements are pretty. Pretty good. I mean, I think a thousand foot pivot is just five, six hundred gallons a minute. Vince, you know these off the top of your head? Fourteen hundred, you're looking at. I believe eleven hundred, twelve hundred gallons a minute.
Yeah, it depends on how fast you want to run the tube.
Right. I mean, there's, there are some variables involved in it, but.
Lot of variables. Long way down, you don't.
You add a percentage where you can't, the rate of withdrawal can't be more than more. Fifty percent. Can't exceed.
I can understand your point and not change, you know, if you change it. How fast you pull out, it does affect surrounding pools of water or whatever, but.
Just for the.
Maybe we need to have two stipulations in there instead of one.
Just, just for the board's consideration, you know, we're contemplating a rule. To codify. A court ruling. That when you have a change of use in existing historic use permit, you lose protection, you become a regular permit. When these things get passed. Within thirty-sixes, the broader. The broader view of this. These rules will be used in order to introduce legislation to codify that within thirty-six eventually. I think the safest thing. Is not to go read too far into it and go too far with it. I don't want to be the poster child for. For the codification of. Guitar holdings. I just want to be careful when we do it. Some of this is, is, is straight up in a ruling. I mean, you amend the purpose of use. The ruling says you don't get to keep your existing historic use protections. It's, it's real straightforward. The place of use, it's talking about that because they're talking about moving it out of county. Amend the withdrawal rate? I want to read up on that and see where it's in, in the ruling when they're talking about it because if they're talking about it, then I'll. Who we need to have it in there.
Can we put it in there where if he has to go in and rebuild his pump, has to change anything, decides to change anything? That we can reevaluate as well if it's at that time? I mean, it's, it's not rocket science, is it?
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, but the, the contemplated rule is, is strictly revolved around. Change of, changing an existing historic use permit, not going back in and reevaluating whether or not they get to keep it or not. It's just. If you change it, you don't get to keep it. That's what we're talking about.
That's understandable, but that's, we're talking about flow rates and changing the pumps and.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, for a basic rule that says if you change this, you don't have existing historic use protections anymore. Each one of these is, is an example of if you do this, you don't get to keep this. If you amend the purpose of use, you don't keep your existing historic use protection. If you amend the place of use, you don't keep your existing historic use protection. The withdrawal rate. If you add a new well to an existing system that's not a replacement well. If you substantially alter an existing historic use permitted well or well system. That's why I got a little, you know, there's some. Reasons to substantially alter. Those systems from time to time. It has to do with efficiency. If you're not going, if you're not flood irrigating anymore and you want to go to a pivot, you're going to, you're going to alter that system. Increase the annual groundwater production authorized above historic or existing permitted use. Well, you were given that amount. For the existing historic. You've already been granted it, so how can you increase it? When you already went through the process? I don't have a problem with that one. They all sound. Fairly solid to me, except the substantially altering an historic or existing use permitted well or well system. And the reason I say that is because you may want to alter that system for increasing efficiency. So you're not using as much water. You may want to change your power source. That one's a little.
Power source shouldn't change. That much if you're going from diesel to gas. Still running the same.
I wouldn't call, I wouldn't call that substantial. I don't think you would either, but. What anybody else?
How does the law read it on that?
I don't know.
Well.
I didn't go in there.
Well, specifically what the Attorney General said. He reached a two main conclusions. He said, first, a court would likely conclude. That a district has sufficient discretion to accept an owner's surrender. Of a portion of the rights to produce of a historic existing use permit. While maintaining protection of the remainder. A holder and a holder be qualified for new permits for the lease portion by meeting the same requirements that any other owner must satisfy. To obtain a permit for new use. So what, what we can't do. Is we can't give the historic user an advantage of any kind because they have this work permit to get that new permit.
And I'm sure Mr. Schott and the people that are going back to the rigor, he, he should understand that. He's read it. He knows.
Yeah.
And that's why he's wanting to do it because he's already read and understood it. Likely.
The, the AG also said a court would likely determine. That the uniformity requirements in chapter thirty-six of the Warner Code preclude. District rules that would give any advantage to a historic or existing use permit holder. Who seeks new use approval that is not available to other new use permit applicants.
That's interesting because you reading that just now makes, I've always wondered why. Our rules had, if you want to do an amendment, you have to go through the testing process. That opinion just said it. They can't give them any advantage.
That's right.
But he just went through the testing process. This is given from a test as well. Yeah, so he's already done that.
The way we handle Mr. Cos' permits exactly right according to what I believe the AG opinion required. And by the way, I think these rules follow exactly what. Had these rules been in place, he would follow these rules.
So let me ask you this, Greg. So. Only substantially altered. What would be the, the definition of that?
That comes from.
Who's going to be the one that says what is substantially altered? Do we need to put a definition there that defines it?
Right now, chapter thirty-six says, and by way, we'll take the opinion quotes. Districts must require permits for all quotes, drilling, equipping, operating, or completing a well or source substantially altering the size of wells or wells. So I don't, I don't know. I think it's, I think that's kind of a. You know, when you see it, you all, you all get to make that interpretation. Whether or not what has happened is substantial or not. You know, it's going from. Before you have quarter horsepower to half horsepower substantial. Maybe not. It's going from a quarter horsepower to four horsepower substantial, probably so. I'm not sure where you draw that line.
Well, I mean, there's. So this board may say, okay, that's not substantial. Then you get. Another board in here say, oh yeah, that's substantial.
That's exactly right.
So would it be better for us to define it?
If you have a way to draw.
Has there been any case law on that? Has there been any cases on what's substantial?
I, I would say. Take it out. You've got it covered underneath the rate of withdrawal, place of use, an existing system that's not a replacement well. Anyway. What else are they going to do to substantially alter it?
That's a good point.
Yeah, you're going to have to get a permit to rim out the hole if you're going to make it any bigger. And if it's, if it's a certain size, it's only going to yield so much water that the physics of it are not going to allow it to do anything else.
The only reason I included this here is because it's included in other rules for other districts that have a different lawyer.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean it's right or wrong. It depends. I saw it in multiple other rules.
Well, I've done an amendment and I accepted this without the rule. And so I don't have a problem. I, I think it's the right ruling of the deal. I would say. Strike five. I would motion to propose this with the exception of five, which I would strike. strike five. I, I would motion to propose this with the exception of five, which I would strike. And let it roll just like that. Just leave that part out, put the rest of it in there.
But if you don't have that part in there, somebody decides they want to do that, then you say, well, it's not in the rules.
Well, how are they gonna substantially alter it if they're not putting another well on it, if they're not changing the withdrawal rate, if they're not changing the place of use or the purpose of use?
If it collapses in the end, I mean, I don't know how many times water well collapses. I mean, I work in oil field, they collapse. And they have to go in there and reopen them up to get them to where they pump. Now, water wells, I don't know. I imagine there've been one or two. Somebody's lifetime that just collapsed and they've had to rework.
Well, in order to, in order to get in there and drill it, they would have to have a permit to drill, would they not?
You have to have, well, I think we do require permits to repair a well if they're going to substant, to substantially alter the size of the well. But to do that, that's gonna result in change in the rate of withdrawal uh, or change in the total amount of withdrawal. So both of those are already covered by the other provision.
Greg, you've seen that in several, you've seen that number five in several other.
Yes, sir.
PCD.
Yes, sir. That, that just means their general counsel wrote it. They all accepted. Doesn't mean that they have a definition of it.
Does it protect somebody if their well collapses? Or goes dry and they have to drop it?
If, if anything, having this provision in here would create an argument that somebody who has to, to do a replacement well or to re-drill a well probably loses their historic use protection by doing so because they have now substantially altered the well.
Historically, when they drill them, there's lots of water. Now there's a lot less water. What if he has to drop it? You see what I'm saying?
Keeping this provision would likely mean that to do that, he would, that, that person would lose their historic use protection. Their question is, do you want them to lose their historic use protections or do you want them to keep their historic use protection? If they have to drill deeper to get to the well.
What if they just have to put their well down twenty foot, pump down twenty foot? I'd drill the well any deeper.
You know.
Exactly.
So I, I, I made the motion.
Is it safe, is it safe to leave it in or is it safe, it could be better to take it out is what I'm asking. I mean.
It depends on whether you want to make it harder to keep the historic use protections or make it easier to keep the historic use. This makes it harder to keep the historic use protection.
If you leave it in.
I don't think this sentence is required by either guitar or the AG opinion. I'm just trying to follow up here.
Uh, I, I, I understand. You, you, you've taken what you've got across the state from other districts and to try and, and, and address the deal. Uh, I just think that, that five is covered already and I think it's a little loose with the word substantial. And so I made the motion to propose this, striking five and propose the rest of it.
But if you strike five, the rest of them will protect historic user that he has to drop as well if he needs to.
Uh, as long as that doesn't change the purpose, use, place, use, way to withdraw with the amount of withdrawal, yes.
Exactly. All the rest of them, the five that we're leaving, as long as they don't change the five that we're leaving, they can, they can do that.
I'll second it.
If you want to keep three, is the man the rate was called, you want to change that to increase?
Uh, I would think increase would be better there.
I think so too. I thought I changed that.
Uh, yeah, it needs to be because if they want to lower their rate of withdrawal, I think we'll be okay with that.
Exactly.
They want to take less water out, so take the water out more slowly. Yeah, we, we, we don't have a problem with that.
So you have objection to that change of the motion?
Uh, no, not from me. Any objections?
No.
Your main, your, yeah, your main concern is going to be whether or not you affect anybody else around you. So yeah, just put it as an increase.
Okay. We change if the increase five comes out, six becomes five.
Yep. Any further discussion? Questions? Yeah. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those vote, same side. Motion carries, six to one. Uh, discussion possible action copy machine contract with Marlin leasing. So, you got something for us?
I'm sorry, I still don't have it going back from the copy.
Oh, they, they, they still haven't got with us, huh?
Table that takes till next one.
All right. Well, I'll move the table that until next month. Second. Motion been made and seconded. The table of copy machine contract till next month, those in paper, raise your right hand. All votes, same side. Motion carries.
I'm sorry, Greg, one quick question. Do you want to hold this, this permit, uh, rule hearing at the next board meeting?
Uh, I would like to do that uh, as quickly as we can post it. And then hopefully we can have the hearing a little bit before the board meeting so we can consider what the public tells us before we vote it up or down. That's what I, that's what I would prefer, but it's the board's pleasure.
Same day as the board meeting?
It has to, it has to be, uh, twenty days. So when do we, how soon do we get it in the paper and get twenty days after that?
Have a special meeting or you try to, it's a regular.
It'll be next Monday before we can get again. And our next meeting is gonna be already ready.
Yeah, it's not gonna make it. Sixteen.
Yeah, well, that's, well, that's why we couldn't have the.
Twenty days, Blake, I think this is.
We have a public, we have a public, we have a public hearing set for the week before the December meeting. Because when we moved back our meeting dates, we couldn't, we couldn't have our public hearing.
At this meeting.
Pardon me?
We're gonna have the public hearing at this meeting, get, get the publication deadline.
Right. Couldn't have it at this meeting because it didn't meet the publication deadline. So we're having it a week before. This one probably won't, I don't know, will it meet the, we don't, we can't meet the December deadline, right?
December tenth would be the, if we go straight days.
I think it's calendar days, right, for twenty days.
I thought it was, I thought it was twenty.
Calendar.
No, it's calendar.
Calendar days?
Calendar.
Okay.
December tenth is what I got.
And we're on the seventeenth and we have another public hearing already scheduled for I say, eighth, right? Hey, it's fine by me. Y'all want to have another one on the tenth, I'm down.
You have a special meeting?
Just a public hearing.
Yeah.
The board didn't even have to attend him. I'm, I highly recommend that you do, but.
Wherever you're not required to attend, you're certainly welcome to. If, if a former board shows up, we need to post it as a meeting. So please let Janelle throw, if you plan to attend, so you can post it in the center. But yeah, I mean, when I, when I was chairman of EAA, we had five public hearings on every rule provision, on every budget proposal, and I conducted all of those public hearings throughout the eight committees that we represented. So, uh, and I had typically three of the seventeen board members show up.
We can't do this the same day as our regular meeting, like before, like we usually do?
Well, we can, but we're not really considering what they tell us. Hold on an hour after they talk to us about it. But I mean, we can, we certainly can.
That, that's, that is a lot more typical, that boards conduct a public hearing and then consider those rule changes immediately following the public hearing. If you don't get a lot of comments, that's perfectly okay. I did have a situation where somebody walked in with a ream of comments to make, that proposed rules. The president took them and put them on the corner of the desk and they moved to adopt rules proposed and, and went on. So, you know, they didn't really consider any of the comments they received.
Do we need this?
Let's just do it the same day.
Do we need to set that here, Greg? Fine by me. Yeah, we'll do it the same day as the meeting.
Seventeenth, yeah, yeah, very fine.
Okay, I'll set it for the seventeen.
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you. I just wanted to say.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Is it good, Marty?
Uh, well, we just gotta make sure that there's gonna be a paper that'll run next Thursday since it's a holiday.
Oh, yeah.
That'll put you back. It'll be exactly twenty-one days if we have it on the seventeenth, if the paper runs on Thursday. Which I can call them tomorrow morning.
They typically run like on the day, the day before.
Yeah, yeah. They may run it Wednesday, so we'll see. So we'd have to have it the sixteenth or the seventeenth. It will be clear for twenty days.
Okay.
Okay. Could it have it on the tenth because it would be only fourteen days?
Twenty days from the time it airs.
Yeah.
Okay, number twelve. You're up, Greg.
All right.
So on our brush control committee, we've been visiting and I've gotten some figures from NRCS and their cost share with, um, landowners to clearing grub, uh, is running about two hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty per acre, depending on if you are a, uh, historic rancher or a new farmer. There's two different programs. They're a young farmer program, they call it. Um, me and Randy have also been talking to, uh, a spray gun. Randy knows more about that than I do because he's been talking to him.
Yeah. Well, I talked to, uh, Simplot in Canepa. And it's getting more popular to supply some of this brush control on with drones. And I haven't got exact figures on the cost of the drone and stuff, but it's becoming more common and there's more drone operators available. So that would be one possibility to control some weed satchel mosquito.
So they're spraying it with drones or just flying it to check?
No, they're spraying with the drone, yeah.
The drones have really come a long ways. They spray the river, the Rio Grande with drones now, everything for the cane.
It seems like every two months or three, they come up with a bigger, better drone and easier to control and.
Oh, China.
They're learning so much.
Big as buses.
Um, we've, we've been approached by a landowner that has roughly a thousand acres that he would like to clear directly in the, uh, the recharge, uh, course recharge Finto Spring Basin. So I had visited with Jim about this and I think he was looking into it to see if that would be a good area to start. Um, he's gonna work on his application, but the applications can't be turned in until after the first, I believe is what he said of, uh, January. Um, not saying we would foot the entire bill, but it's something that we want to run to the board to and say, hey, you know, it's gonna cost this guy, you know, four hundred and fifty dollars an acre to spray his, his cedar or weed satchel, whatever he's got and, um, you know, the government's only gonna help out with three hundred and fifty or three hundred or whatever it is and see if it's something that we'd be interested in, uh, supplementing with.
What are they spraying it with?
Don't know.
You don't know?
Don't know.
Inbora is the name of the chemical.
Inbora?
That's the newest one out. You can also use, uh, Cinderell. It's an older chemical.
Take that one, I remember. They fly real low and.
Oh, yeah.
Wind spread.
Okay. Maybe five to ten foot, you know, depends on the brush, you know, I'm like. Yeah.
I've been spraying that stuff all my life and I've got cancer from it. So I mean, you know, it kind of makes you wonder about.
Yeah.
Where they're doing it, when they're doing it.
Well, the drone spraying, it, it can be a mechanical removal of the brush as well. Whatever the board decides to do.
Oh, yeah. It's just another option.
Just another option.
Okay.
And.
Drone bill would probably be a lot faster, a lot easier and a lot less time.
Well, the problem, the problems efficacy with, uh, herbicide versus mechanical removal. Uh, you, you, you don't get near the kill typically that you will mechanical removal. Uh, and, and then you have other conditions that are required to get a good kill with the chemicals. When the first time I ever went in for one of those brush removal programs, an equip program, we delayed it five years because we never got the right conditions to spray. And then when we finally did, I only discovered that I couldn't find a crop duster to spray it. We had to switch it to mechanical because you realize there was a cotton farmer next door, he wouldn't touch me. That stuff, that stuff boss, it goes back into the air and the wind moves it and it kill cotton quick.
Well, that's kind of my question there. I mean, you know.
And it could be a combination, you know, depending on terrain. You know, a lot of that country up there is, our recharge areas are pretty rough.
If I get anything in there.
So. So hopefully we'll have a little bit more on that after the first of the year. We may meet again before the end of the year and just go over a few other things that we got cooking.
Good. Anything else on it? We need to.
You good, Randy?
Yeah, I'm good.
Uh, okay, before we go into thirteen, let's take a quick recess for about ten minutes. Everybody's in agreement with that? Any objections? We're gonna call this back, meeting back to order and, uh, continue on with agenda item number thirteen, discussion possible action. Uh, R shot, regular permit and historical permit amendment, continue from the October twenty-eighth.
Wes, I'm gonna step outside.
Okay. We'll holler at you in here in a little bit.
Okay.
And the record can reflect director shot that has left the meeting for the time being. What's the board's pleasure?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments, Wes, right at the beginning because, uh, historically, I guess, during last meetings, um, events, uh, I just take this opportunity to reiterate what I said at last meeting and what the discussion included relative to not just this one permit amendment, but the last one too and, and future ones until the rule changes. But I just wanted to bring to the board's attention rule three point oh four. And I just talked with, uh, Mr. Ellis at the break and he can weigh in on this, but he assures me his counsel and opinion hasn't changed since the last meeting. And it says in rule three oh four, requirements for a regular permit, the amount granted for a regular permit may not exceed the maximum amount requested and, and tested for under the test permit. Uh, so the interpretation of that is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ellis, that the amount the board should limit their approval for would be what is tested for. Given that the request is for eighty acre feet and the tested for amounts according to my paperwork, and I don't know if it's in the current package, but uh, and I have the monthly permit, uh, pumping reports in my package, which I don't know if y'all have seen still or not. Maybe you do or maybe you haven't. But the amount pumped in twenty twenty-five was zero on this, uh, application. The amount pumped acre feet in twenty twenty-four was like one acre foot and the amount pumped in, uh, twenty twenty-three, I think was sixteen point nine or something like that. So corrections are welcome, but it was less than seventeen. So the max amount that was recorded since the application for this permit was established to amend it was less than seventeen. So in my mind and what the rules state is seventeen would be the max that we could even think about approving.
He already has the approval, simply changes use.
I don't think that's how it happened.
Well, I've got a question.
Okay.
Uh, on his historical, what was his amount on historical? Was that where the eighty acre feet come from or is? Because they've been in a historical well before it was a.
Hang on just one quick second. So you, uh, you already put that in the packet, didn't you, the review that? Okay, that's in there. So we don't need to talk about that. Okay. Um, first off, when you have a test period, it's not required that you pump that amount of water. When you vote, when you decide to go for a test, a pump test as opposed to the one-year testing period, you do not pump the amount that you, that you're requesting either. So I don't see the bearing.
But my question was.
Yes, sir.
Before it become a test well, it was a historical. What was the historical amount at that time?
Well, just to be clear, it didn't become a test well. It, the, the well was already there. It's already permitted. Okay? Uh, what he did was he decided to request a change of use. And because of the way that these rules are written. And because of the way that these rules are written, when you do that, you have to be treated as a test permit. Even though it's just a simple amendment, and so you, you get thrown through the same process and what. Mr. Ellis just revealed when he was reading the attorney general opinion. Was the reason that these rules are set up that way is because you can't give an unfair advantage to an existing historic user. Over a new user, so you're making him go through the same process. Uh, at, when he goes to that process, because he decided, he had, he already had this water. And he decided he want to take seventy acre foot of the existing historic use permit he had, and he wanted to change the use of that. Okay, so because of the rules, he's treated as a test permit and he has two options. He can operate the well as intended use for a year. And come back, and we call that a testing period, although we don't require them to pump that amount of water. Or they can opt for a pump test and they can run a pump test that's approved by the district. In lieu of waiting three hundred sixty-five days before they can come up for a hearing. And I've got any of that wrong.
Let me answer this question.
Okay.
Answer your question, and I don't have the exact numbers, but his historic use permit, I think, is almost twelve hundred acre feet. And his existing use permit is all, is all, not just under five hundred. Now, I've never understood the differentiation between the two, I want to make it clear they're not stacked on top of each other, they're not two separate permits, it's one permit that has. Both historic and existing use, I believe what he's amended would take both of them down by the amount of the amendment. So he's reducing his historic use by the same acres that he's, he's changing the purpose of use of.
Now, just to add to that, do you know of any other district that that separates between existing and historic? I've been looking for one, I just didn't know if you knew one.
I don't know of any, and and the existing use, there's one phrase, Jeff thirty-sixth says existing use, so that's where that came from and I don't get. There, to the meat and every, every other use talks about historic, so if there has been historic use. We are allowed to protect to the maximum extent practicable that historic use. Presumably to protect the best of back expectations of the entities that had that historic. So uh he's willing to give up that much of his historic use in order to get this change of use to the new permit.
He's giving up the protection on that amount of water.
Right.
So it's not, it doesn't have that protection anymore, it's considered at that, if, if, if the amendment is granted, then it. It's considered a regular permit from that moment forward and the way the rules are written, those are the first one subject to be cut.
That's correct.
And he can't go back.
He can't go back.
See, y'all lost me.
And Greg, would it be fair to call it a new permit or that's not really accurate?
Well, I just call it regular permit.
Written a new, but is it a new?
Yeah.
Separate permit, like it's a new permit.
Yeah, yes, it's a separate permit, it'll be a certain issue, it's a separate permit.
Subject to rule three oh four.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to amend rule three oh four, I make it clear, because what it does is it encourages people to pump water they don't need. Which is always a bad idea. Um, if they're not going to pump the full amount that they requested, then they probably shouldn't be required to do that pump test in order to figure out what the impact is going to be. In this instance, you're talking about somebody that has had that historic use, I don't have any idea. How long ago he pumped that amount or what, what impact it might have been from that amount and that was not part of pump test. So the way it's written, rule three oh four says that the amount you grant on the permit is the amount that. They requested and pumped during pump test period or that you agreed is authorized through a, through a thirty-six hour pump.
In this case, since the amount pumped was recorded on the monthly pumping reports and the max was. Fifteen point eight two acre feet in twenty twenty three, one point oh two in twenty twenty four and zero in twenty twenty five.
Yeah, that's the total, the total, the total during that first year was.
Fifteen point something.
That should be, almost sixteen acre.
That should be the max.
Thanks, that, that's, that's the way I read the rule.
Okay. Said there, he had so much as historical.
Yes, sir.
But then you said there's another one that he had five hundred acre feet.
As listed as existing use.
It's all one permit, a separate permit.
Yeah, how'd they do that?
There's one. That's a great question, I wish I could explain it to you, Mr. Menley, I, I really can. The, the, the historic use was over a certain period of time, existing use was over a different period of time. But they're both counted as part of all, part of the same permit, with, with the, the grasp, well, we have that grasp by the law, but they kept, and they argued this. Multiple different jurisdictions, they argued that they added up all the historic use permits and they added up all the existing permits and they tacked them all together. And said, this is the amount that they permitted, and it's way more than we've actually permitted. So whichever, whichever is higher, the, the existing or the historic use permit, that gets historic use protections. And that's been authorized to those historic users.
It went over my head, I had two of them on the same well, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, it's not, it's just that this district bifurcated. E- existing historic use into two different periods and they put it all in one. This is the only district that separated those two words, every district up until this district has considered existing and historic within thirty-six to mean the same thing. This district chose not to do that.
Right.
Wow.
No idea.
You'd have to talk to them.
Yeah. I'll have to talk to the board and the general manager and the, and the general counsel that was here in two thousand and one when they did it.
And then the other question, Greg, that I might as well bring up for the board's uh. Information um for the record, and I don't know if we can bring Mr. Shaw back in or somebody can represent. His uh interests to answer this question, but for the record, uh, I would like to know. What this water is for and who says he needs or they need a certain amount. So is the contractor that runs the solar farm say they need eighty acre feet? Uh, it says in the paperwork here, main purpose of industrial use was for dust control. For a solar farm to be constructed and installed on the shop property, so you know, this uh solar farm went active in May of twenty twenty four. So it's been constructed, it's been installed, uh, so I assume this is for continued dust control on the existing solar farm. But if one acre foot was pumped in twenty twenty four and none was pumped in twenty twenty five, how is dust control happened? In twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five anyway, so is there a certain amount that has been used?
What does that have to do with the permit at all?
Well, it needs to be, I think it's our due diligence as we uh manage the resource. That we need to know what the use is and it's our right and I think that's uh in chapter thirty-six. And Greg, you can.
The use is on the application, but.
Well, industrial is not specific enough, the permitee. Uh, should provide the board for the record what the use is planned to be and how much and why and. It goes into a lot more than that and I'm not even going to start on this whole page of stuff, but. Legitimate use, efficient controlled use, justify the volume, infrastructure and capability. Uh, meets with the management plan and.
What are you suggesting, Director?
I'm suggesting we need to hear what the use is and why. Eighty acre feet is even being requested, I don't really know why, because we shouldn't have.
So you want to question, so you want to question the, the applicant?
The use, yes.
Now you want to shoot, question the applicant, Greg?
I, I, I think that's fine, uh, eh. Please note that this, this part was not contested, so we don't have a full contested case hearing type record.
I know.
Um, I, I think it is important to, to. Look, understand what the beneficial use is going to be and require that that ground will be put with beneficial use. I, I would say based on the record, what he pumped, he doesn't waste the water, obviously, he's not pumping it just to pump it. Uh, but, but yes, I think it's a good idea for us to understand what the beneficial uses and. He's the only one here that can tell us that.
All I know is if it's allowable, we'll bring him back in and David can ask any questions he wants to ask.
I'll, I'll go ask him.
If you look at this first page, down the third paragraph, um, it says that. Application at acre feet and with the purpose being to change the use from agricultural to industrial irrigation and livestock. So that's, that's pretty clean.
Well, I think the question would be if, if it needs any, uh, uh, if it's, if any additional, um. If anything additional is required underneath the law, those words are the words that are used within thirty-six as far as I know. I don't know that you have to go beyond that whenever you're filling out the application, but hey, the board can ask any questions they want.
So Randy, the question that I had was, and talking with Mr. Ellis and just for the board's record. Um, we see the application here for eighty acre feet. We see the records for what has been pumped in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So I guess my question is twofold, from you, what is the planned beneficial use of? This permitted amount? And basically, how did you arrive at an eighty acre feet amount, given that in twenty twenty-five, zero is used?
Well, we used some in twenty twenty-four. To uh spray underneath the panels, it's a negligible amount of, it shows up in my record.
Yeah, no, that's fine, it's one acre feet, okay, in twenty twenty-four.
We did not uh use any this year out of it, okay? We've got a grass cover underneath the panels that's totally awesome right now, we're not having a dust problem. But I'm just looking down the road, maybe a problem in the future, we've got a lot of roads out there. Depending on if they're doing a lot more maintenance than they have been as the unit gets older, there's going to be more maintenance vehicles in there. Whatnot.
Okay. Uh, all right. So the answer is for the record, it's possible in the future, you might need some and eighty acre feet would be plenty.
Yeah. More than adequate for what we're going to need.
I would think so, since twenty twenty-four used one and twenty twenty-five used zero.
Not going.
Well.
Off somewhere to Timbuktu.
It comes out of the aquifer though.
Yeah. Do you realize how much uh water goes back in, it's that solar farm from clearing twelve hundred acres of brush? When you take off twelve hundred acres of mesquite, we-sats, hackberries, Wanacon. You, have you ever seen the figures of what that does when you've got a grass cover instead of brush that it's stuck in water up?
That science is uh debatable, so we'll save that for hydrologists.
No, it is not.
Federal government sure has spent a lot of money on it.
And it's not relevant to this discussion anyway, for one thing.
To me, it is relevant, Daddy.
All right, that's my only question, so um.
No further question?
Answered that eighty is a random number.
No, it's not random, we figured that out and we thought we were going to have more dusty conditions at first. It was not a random number, do not label it as a random number.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Good.
Does anybody else have any questions from Mr. Shaw?
I don't have any questions for him. Take care of things only up and up. And I want him to know the last time when I sustained from voting. It was not because I didn't want you to have your water, it's because the way the president. Overruled what the lawyer said that we weren't supposed, we should not vote on the last one that we did. This is why I've sustained, because it wasn't done by what it was supposed to be done, it wasn't by rules. And that's the only reason I've abstained from voting on both of them is because he pushed it through after the lawyer said that we should not. So that's the only reason, I think everybody that has a well deserves to have their well, I think they deserve to have their water. I just want it done right and whenever he did that, free not to invoke the last time. That's the only reason, and since that happened, I've had. Y'all's lawyer called, the lawyer at Spofford, saying that I couldn't be on the board anymore, we've already been through this three times. So I don't care who called the lawyer, who had him sic them on me again, y'all do what you need to do about me and get it done, get it over with. I'm tired of it, y'all try to bully somebody and it's not going to work with me, I'm just stupid enough to stay in here until the hell freezes over. So y'all do what you need to do with me and get it over with, I'm not against anybody having their water in this board, I'm for the water. And they all deserve the water, spent years taking care of it. So when y'all bully me, it's not going to work, I'm talking to you, Wes. Because you're the one that pushed this through last time and you did it wrong, so that makes the other side of the board not want to go along with what y'all are trying to do.
Mr. Menley, I'm not bullying you and I hadn't bullied you.
Well, when I called you little man the other day, it's, it's being disrespectful because you have not give anybody in this board respect yourself. So if you want it, you're going to have to respect other people to get it.
I could care less what you respect, Mr. Menley.
Well, I sure don't, so that's pretty clear.
Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, sir, I'm done, little man.
That's cute coming from you.
Isn't it?
Yeah, okay, anybody have a motion? Anybody want to do anything here, we keep going around in circles?
Well, I'm just going to say that I'll make a motion on it, but I would like to comment that I think that it's a good thing. Because a lot of the water that was used for the construction of these solar farms came directly from the city of Bracketville and Fort Clark. That are directly impacting the spring, these wells are a lot further away, they'll be less impactful in the spring. I think it's a good thing if we can let him use his water out there for the solar farm, by all means do it, it takes pressure off the spring. So I'm voting in favor.
I'm making a motion. You're moving to.
Yeah, to grant.
I'll second that motion with this comment. The man already has the water, it's a water right. He doesn't have seventy acre foot of water in his pocket and we're not giving him seventy acre foot of water. We're only granting him the right to attempt to get it if it's there.
Wes, he's got a permit for twelve hundred acre feet, he's going to change it to eighty acre feet that he can do any industrial use he wants. He can bottle it like you plan to do one day, he can put it in a water truck and sell it to the pipeline, he can do whatever he wants industrially with it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The chapter thirty-six is, are we allowed to prioritize use?
No, sir, I didn't say you can't, I'm saying what can happen. So with eighty acre feet, he can do whatever he wants to with it.
Prioritize industrial.
To knock down dust with it.
Don't interrupt.
I'm talking.
No, you're not, I'm asking a question of our council so he can clarify this.
Okay.
Can we discriminate versus industrial, municipal, ag? Do we get to prioritize that?
I didn't suggest any discrimination, so that's not.
The answer, the answer to your question is the only discrimination you can do between historic and nonhistoric. You can protect historic uses to the maximum extent practicable, and that's it.
So to me, what we're doing is we're taking seventy acre foot from a higher priority. And we're moving it down to a lower priority that we can manage more. That's what we're essentially doing and that's all we're essentially doing.
And it's going to increase use and if that's what you want to do.
We don't know that it's going to increase use or it won't. That means it increases use, really.
If he has five thousand five hundred acre feet. Already. He's not actually using any extra water at eighty, he still has this five hundred acre feet, so I mean.
It's a new, it's a new use though, Barry, so.
But he still already has the five hun- five hundred.
For different uses, if you can use it to, for irrigation or for livestock, that's a totally different deal.
How, how they get that though, five hundred and then whatever we have on this portal, that's, yeah, that's, but until we straighten that out.
All right, and you know, whatever, you guys do what you want, you know, it's on the record that rule three point oh four says what it says. And our council that we usually trust to give us good advice is giving us advice that we're just. our council that we usually trust to give us good advice has given us advice that we're just completely ignoring.
What's your advice, Greg?
I think that rule three point oh four says that the permit should be limited to the amount that was actually produced during the test periods for the amount proved up in a thirty-six hour pump test.
Or change the rule?
So the amount that he produced during that period was fifteen, well sixteen acre feet.
Fifteen point eight two.
So it's, I think it's very important. We cannot give any kind of preference to the fact that it's changing that historic use permit down to a regular permit. I think we ought to be able to do that, but I think it's required statute for change before we can because of the guitar case and the D P in that we have. Uh, I think we can change our rules certainly because our rule in, in terms of requiring people to pump water they don't need to use in order to qualify for the size permit they want, this is probably a bad idea.
So can I amend Blake's motion to approve fifteen acre feet?
You can certainly make a motion to amend his motion, yes, sir.
Okay, I move to amend Director Ward's motion to approve a fifteen acre foot permit. As requested, accept the amount to read fifteen acre feet.
Do we have a second?
This needs to be worked out a little bit better than what this is because this is too hard to try to read through between the lines on all this stuff. This has to be.
All I'm looking for is a second.
A second to motion. We need to, we need to get the rules and regulations straightened out where they're understandable, where we can keep this straight.
Well, that's not what the motion is. The motion is to grant, to, to change Director Ward's motion from fifty, uh, from the seventy acre foot down to fifteen. Eighty, excuse me, down to fifteen. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of changing that motion from eighty down to fifteen, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So I guess everybody could get. Were you holding up on that? Or you wanted to discuss that before you voted?
I just abstained on it, but I've got something to say. So after this last meeting, did, did y'all not hear what was said at the last meeting? Because you can't even bring it up.
I heard everything that was said at the last meeting, Matt.
What did he say about the Austin chalk?
Did you read what?
What did I just say? What did they, what did they say about the Austin chalk?
You said the Austin chalk was completely not linked at all to
What did they tell you?
These wells and then.
What did they tell you?
They told me what Vince Claus put in his thing. You want me to read it to you?
What did they say? What did they say in front of video and everybody last week? What did they tell you?
He told me that they, uh, how do you word it? Are not completely separate, but negligibly impactful in his opinion.
That ain't what I heard.
And then if you read what Ron Green said in his two thousand nineteen study, he said the Austin chalk very well could affect loss more spring. If you want to read what Vince gave you in the package in this recent thing. And Ron Green, Dr. Ron Green, is a pretty well-respected person.
Understand that.
Right.
But you've got two people that have run studies in this county, which he has them.
And oh, by the way, that's not relevant to what rule three point oh four says. That's the basis of what we're doing.
Because what you're basing everything on is everything that affects that spring.
Basically, those rules are more set down.
Gentlemen, 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 that's enough. Okay, right now, what we have is a motion on the floor with a second to approve the amendment. We had a motion and a second to amend the motion, lower its fifteen acre feet. It failed. Two, three, one. Okay, so the original motion is still on the floor. We can continue discussion or we can call for the question.
Was the original motion seconded? Who seconded the original motion?
I did.
For the record.
The, the original motion was made by Director Ward and I seconded it.
Why the Austin chalk comes up, I don't know. It has nothing to do with it. So what we're trying to do is follow the rules. The rules need to be changed. I don't have a problem with him getting eighty acre feet, but the rules don't let it. And that's where we're having a problem.
Actually, the rule four point oh one says prohibition of waste. No person shall intentionally or negligently commit waste of water. So if he didn't need it for a test, then why should he have pumped it? That would have been very wasteful.
Not to mention.
Would that be wasteful though?
Two hour conversation last time.
One more point that you need to be aware of. The district has already granted an amendment in access of what was tested for. So might be a consideration. You've already done it.
The board did it. Not everybody did it. The board did it.
We are the district.
Against the advice of council again.
No.
So they're gonna do it again.
No, this was actually six years ago.
Well, then that's their business. Six years ago.
Why don't we fix the rules? Just get this straightened out and then.
I have no problem, I have no problem fixing that rule. It's obviously flawed. But that doesn't change what we have before us right now, which is an amendment. It's pretty simple amendment. Nobody's complaining about it. Nobody objected to it. Nobody's following into party status on it. It's change of use for eighty acre feet from one thing to another. That's not overly complicated.
I want to put on the record, if this board blatantly breaks the rules, you guys just go ahead and see what happens.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor of granting the shot regular permit amendment, raise your right hand. All those opposed.
By the way, David, I want you to.
Hang on. All those opposed, same sign.
So now.
You abstaining? Okay.
So now, I want to see what you want to do to this board. You made that comment.
I didn't say I was gonna do anything, Matt.
You just made a comment, so now let's see what you're gonna do.
I didn't say I was doing anything, Matt, so don't read into my, no, I did not.
Sir, you just did.
No, I did not.
Okay. That's all, that's all you're gonna say.
It's not my place, but
Yeah, it is.
It's public information that you just decided to do something in complete disregard, felony rules, and complete.
I am calling your bluff. You show me what you're gonna do.
Anything. It's gonna be.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we still have a meeting finished, and we are already, we are already past this agenda item, Director. We are past it.
It's not me, Matt.
Y'all gonna have this conversation after the meeting. Number fourteen, discussion possible action GMA ten interlocal agreement funding matrix. Ms. Hodge, if you would explain this, please.
I've got some magic here. I explained a little of it when we were, I was doing my general manager report, and then I think Beth touched on it briefly too. Uh, if you'll turn to the third page of this, it shows the funding matrix, GMA ten, gives the district, district's attorney. If you go over to King County's third one down. So let's see the, of the total, total cost allocation for us over the three, four-year period. Ten thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and twenty-six, twenty-six cents. Uh, we are not included in one of those that the other districts have to pay for. Whereas we're paying the least amount of any of the total of five districts. What the, what this agreement is, it's called an interlocal agreement. Uh, we did the same thing last year, or before last year, GMA seven. We were agreeing to enter into this interlocal agreement with the end result being explanatory report as provided by Collier Consulting. And this is I think I sent this out earlier to everyone, so you had a chance to review it. It originally, the contract, the original contract was gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand, but it's been increased to a hundred and fifty thousand, which has no effect on us. This is just something that needs to be, it needs to go and be approved by all the, you know, each district has to approve it. Uh, the only thing that's been taken out from the previous one several years ago was, um, at that time, it called for each district attorney to approve it or to sign off on it. And that's been, since been taken out, this one. So I would recommend the board go ahead and prove this so we can move forward.
Any questions? Entertaining motion could prove.
Make a motion.
Motion's been seconded, uh, made by Director Warren, seconded by Director Bland to approve the agreement of funding matrix. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries now.
Thank you.
Number fifteen, discussion possible action financial statements of October twenty twenty-five. Let me run through this. The total income is twenty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Total expenses, twenty-nine thousand twelve dollars and twenty-two cents. The net profit loss is negative three thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Avalory on taxes receivables, twenty-one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Expenses payable, four thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight cents. The net, sixteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-five cents. Accounts receivable, sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty, I mean sixty-seven cents. General fund, negative five thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-three cents. Money market, two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, forty-three cents. Uh, petty cash, three hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Well, long deposit, five thousand two hundred. The tax pool, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Uh, number one C D is a hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and nineteen cents. And C D number two is two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Any questions? Not, we'll move on to agenda item seventeen, discussion possible action invoices received and invoices paid.
That's the last one to pause. It's an action item.
Uh, the last one was not an action item as far as on the agenda, it just says a review.
We were on fifteen.
Oh, excuse me. Ah, skipping ahead, wasn't I? Discuss the possible, oh, yeah, okay. I didn't entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion's been made by Director Lamb and seconded by Director Shaw to approve the financial statements for October twenty twenty-five. All those, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimous. Number sixteen, that's the review of the Mountain Best Model. Anybody have any questions?
No.
I don't know.
All right, let's move on to number seventeen, discussion possible action invoices received and invoices paid.
I have, I have something to explain on that.
Sure.
Uh, down at the bottom, you will note the two handwritten forms for Bonnie and for Marty that was payroll. Um, about four or five lines up above, there was one for me that printed out. I don't know what was, I don't know if it was operator error or if it was something with the computer. But it was, uh, between the computer and the copy machine. Theirs did not, theirs did not print out. They didn't print out correctly, so I had to handwrite them in when, um, bookkeeper Kathy was over. She came over last Friday to do the financials and she, the amounts, the amounts are correct. They're in there. They just did not show up on the, they just did not show up on, on this. They will show up on the next financial statement, so it's but they're, it's what the amount is for each one of them. Next one is handwritten in. It didn't print off like it should.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions?
No.
Okay, I didn't entertain a motion.
So I'm.
I'll second. Motion's made by Director Shaw and seconded by Director Bland to approve the invoices received and invoices paid. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, number eighteen, election of officers.
So this is a reelect? All those officers or none of them, or how does this work, Wes?
Every year, according to our bylaws, we elect officers. We elect them all, once a year.
You could do them all together with one motion. You could do them one by one. You can bring up an office and nominate people, or you can have a vote between those two or three people, however you want to handle it.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Move that we, uh, elect Blake Ward as president and leave the rest of the officers in place as, uh, existing.
We can't leave him in place as existing because he's vice president.
And, uh, I would like to amend my motion to, uh, make Blake Ward president and, uh, leave it at that. And we'll go with the other officers after that.
Okay, so you're nominating Director Ward?
For president, yes, I am.
Okay.
That's seconded.
Okay.
Can I speak on it?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta accept.
I, uh, I would like to stay as vice president. I don't have the time to commit to being president. Uh, if somebody wants to be vice president, that's fine too. No hard feelings, but I can't, I can't do it right now.
So you're not accepting the nomination?
No, sure.
Okay.
I may withdraw my motion. What's the cleanest way to do that? I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
You can withdraw your second.
I appreciate the, the thought.
He can talk you into it either.
No.
I'll make the motion that we keep the officers the same.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to keep the officers as, as they stand. Any discussion?
I might go, yeah, there is some, please. I'm gonna go on record, uh, and whatever, everybody knows who the current president is, and everybody's seen the videos, and the public, I think, deserves a more, uh, professional conducive environment to do the business that this water board is required to do. So in my opinion, I think the office of president should be changed. I think you've done your duty, Wes. You've done your best. I got no really, you know, thing to say other than that, and I appreciate your service, but I think, uh, you know, environment around here is essentially toxic and could be improved with a different president. That's my opinion.
Anybody else? Okay, will we do this? Are you willing to serve as secretary now?
Yeah.
You're willing to serve as vice president?
And if nobody else wants it.
I will serve as president one more year. All those in favor of the motion to keep the officers the same, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. You abstaining? Okay. Motion carries. Uh, number nineteen, director's request for items on next or future agenda.
I have one. I have one.
Okay.
Let's fix this rule that we just had so long discussion about. The lawyer needs to rewrite this to where we can understand it, where it's understood.
Three point oh four, that's the one you're referring to, correct? Just to be sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
It's three point oh four.
I, I concur and I will second that motion and put that on the agenda. We need to fix that.
Need to fix that.
Absolutely.
This is, we're not getting anywhere whenever you can't understand what's going on.
I, I concur with you, Director, and I agree that we should put that on there.
What rule was it?
Three point oh four. For consideration to amend and revise. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of putting that on the next month's agenda, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so three point oh four. Amend or revise.
Wes, do we need to, uh, formally request at that workshop that Vince was talking about for the, uh, you know, we're going to try to do that other rule review, public hearing that day, but Vince was talking about doing that workshop to talk about the D F C before the next meeting, you say like five o'clock.
Yeah.
So do we need to move formally to do that or just do that?
I think we can just do that, can't we? Do, do we need to take action on it?
It's not part of the agenda.
Well, that'd be separate. That'd be a workshop separate. Okay.
Call it a separate workshop.
It's just a separate workshop. It's not part of the, part of it per se, so I don't, I don't think so.
Or. Then the other thing, Wes, I'd like to see is, uh, however it works in a open or closed session, you're, uh, brief to the board on the summary of the, uh, general mount, general manager evaluations. I think we need to be done with that this year.
Well, I don't have any problem being done with it, but putting it on the board before, putting it on the agenda before I have it doesn't make a lot of sense. Now, I can tell you this, if I have it before the next meeting, I'm going to be asking the general manager to put it on there.
Okay, well, everybody in their.
Cause I want it, I want it on my desk.
I'd like to bring your attention to this form. We got audited essentially in March, report for the audit came out in May. Our general manager is supposed to be evaluated in June, the anniversary of her employment. This is November. If you haven't filled this form out, you probably should. And so Wes can do his job and we can do our job. Thank you.
Any other future agenda items? Okay. That leaves with, with the gen item number twenty, and I will bid you adieu. Turn it over to the vice president.
Oh, something else within there's the copy machine.
Uh, yeah, well, we tabled it so it automatically goes on. We don't have to take action. We don't have to. We don't actually have to say we're going to put it on there when we table it automatically goes on the next month. Supposed to anyway. Uh. Who's tablet it to? Wes?
Oh, yeah.
Got it. Thanks, sir.
All right.
All right, guys. We won't drag this out too long. Uh, item twenty, we know we visited about it. I think the last two or three meetings and played our cards. And, um, have y'all had a chance to look it over?
Yes, I have.
So basically, um, we got a notice from, uh, the lodge who owns the building, uh, that they were going to raise our rent to a thousand dollars a month. And Janelle, we authorized her to enter into discussion with them. And, um, it looks like on this lease agreement, which first time I've seen it, you know, they can look at it, but it looks like that they are at eight hundred dollars a month. Does that look right? So ninety six hundred dollars annually. Traditionally, we paid five hundred dollars a month, I think, is the amount, which I agree was probably low. Uh, but they've come back with this, um, so, uh, it's the board's pleasure on, uh, if y'all want to accept this or if y'all want to have Janelle, approve Janelle to negotiate with them again. Uh, it would be an increase of roughly thirty six hundred dollars a year if my math's all right.
How long has it been at five hundred? How many years?
Forever. I don't know.
A long time, ten years probably, right, Janelle?
Five years.
Five years, okay.
Uh, we'd have to look at.
Two years, right, Janelle? Two years at eight hundred, I think it was, Blake?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the proposed lease as.
It's a two-year lease?
A two-year lease.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
It says sixty.
It says sixty, then it says twenty four next to it.
Yeah.
Am I reading that right? Did you read that?
Yeah, I think you, you wrote twenty four, but it still says sixty months on there as well. So is it two years or five years?
It says twenty four months.
It's sixty as well.
Yeah. Mark out the one we don't want. Well.
They, they said that they would go for eight hundred, because we, we questioned it last time about the, you know, the thousand dollars a month and then, uh, nine hundred dollars a month for a three-year agreement. So they came back with eight hundred dollars for a two-year agreement.
But, but read that sentence, read that sentence, Janelle.
Say sixty.
It's regular sixty and to go for twenty four.
Oh, okay.
So I would like to amend my motion to, with the word sixty struck from this lease.
But you'll still have to take.
Before the number twenty four.
Yeah.
So that it reads for a tenancy of twenty four months at eight hundred dollars per month.
Right.
Yeah, but you still have to take back to them to make sure that they don't think it's sixty and it's twenty four.
We'll get that corrected.
Yeah. Well, maybe with the authorization of Janelle to negotiate that and approve it.
Exactly.
Right? That sound good?
We will go and approve on twenty four months.
Twenty four months. So do y'all want to approve it tonight or y'all want to wait?
We could, we could vote on, we could vote on the twenty four if they amend that.
Yes. And they will, I think they just failed to change it.
Okay.
And in twenty four months, Blanche said we need to buy some land, but you have the money. Or find another spot with two bathrooms. Well, I mean, when they take a ten minute break, there's twenty feet headed for the bathroom. So.
We have a motion on the floor, seconded by Director Lewis. Director Palmer made the motion. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I'm just going to take care of the sixty.
He's doing that, uh, pose.
All right. Next item we have is to adjourn.
I'm making motion, we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Go pass them unanimously. Court is adjourned, meeting adjourned.